Total wasteland. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the September 20th City Council meeting for the City of Cannon Falls to order. Could we have roll call, please?
Bringle.
Here.
Duncan.
Here.
Yezmy.
Here.
Ronenberger.
Here.
Lindell.
Here.
Montgomery.
Here.
Althop.
Here. Would you rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, agenda. Anything from the council as far as corrections or additions? I've got a few, but anything? Okay, I'm going to add, Steve Dablo has a presentation after public input. He's here from the Historical Society with a message and a little presentation, so he'll be after public input. And then, on the consent agenda, we need to delete items I and items L. Item I and item L. Oh, L's already gone. Okay, just I, okay. So with those changes, the addition of Steve Dablo, and the elimination of item I on the consent agenda, do I have a motion to accept the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Duncan, a second by Yezmy, to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Okay, we'll get into public input. Public input is intended to afford the public an opportunity to address concerns to the city council. The public input will be no longer than 30 minutes in total length, and each speaker will have no more than three minutes to speak. Speakers may address topics relevant to the governance of the city. Speakers must sign up in advance and provide their name, address, and topic they intend to address. Comments must be on-topic, respectful, pertinent of city business, and adhere to the applicable data about privacy rules. Any speaker that violates these rules will be asked to sit down, and if the speaker refuses to comply, they'll be removed from the meeting. Speakers shall not address topics that are subject of a public hearing. All such comments shall be made at the public hearing. The city council will not generally act on issues raised by the public input, but may choose to schedule consideration of the item on a future agenda. Okay, first up, Eric Porton.
Good evening. In the midst of nursing and EMS shortages across our state, why has city administrator Neil Jensen found it necessary to reduce personnel in the city's ambulance? Tonight, myself and three other EMTs are slated to be laid off from the ambulance. What I find hard to understand is why these three other EMTs are being laid off, because from what I can ascertain, they may have already resigned. As of last week, these three individuals did not have a gear locker or a mailbox at the ambulance station. I did. Nor were they listed as active members on our Alad Tech roster. I am. If layoffs are due to inactivity are the purpose, then why are three additional ambulance staff members who have not worked in over a year not also on tonight's layoff list? And why is my agenda item the only one listed as saying a layoff for personal reasons? What are these personal reasons of mine? Or are these personal reasons of yours? I believe it to be morally and ethically wrong to initiate force, fraud, coercion against any individual. Force masking is the only thing preventing me from being able to work. I have suggested and sought out multiple avenues to continue working for this service. In the interactions that I've had with certain council members and the city administrators, I am left to wonder if the reason for putting my name on tonight's list of layoffs is because I've spoken out. Or perhaps it is because of the circumstantial evidence that I have, which leads me to reasonable suspicion that the city administrator has falsified official correspondence with me. And I do have that evidence to corroborate the claim. So I ask, what is the city's standard to determine laying me off? Seven months ago, this council approved an updated policy for unscheduled part-time employees. I'd like to know what portion of this policy I am not in accordance with. I have had the privilege to serve on Cannon Falls since 2011, over which time I've served 5,512 hours to this community. I am willing and able to work and want to continue serving this community, but I will not be forced to operate against my beliefs. It appears I'm not the only one, only EMT in Minnesota who does not like these forced policies. According to Glenn Howard at the Star Tribune in his article in February of this year, he states that nearly 60% of the state's 10,465 EMTs did not provide patient care in 2021, suggesting they left the workforce altogether. As you move to vote tonight, if you choose to vote yes, know you are doing so not because of my personal reasons, as is written before you, but because of my unwavering personal beliefs. On Sunday night, during a 60-minute interview, President Biden stated, "The pandemic is over. If you notice, no one's wearing masks. Everybody seems to be in pretty good shape, and so I think it's changing. Well, maybe it's time for Cannon Falls to support change, too. Thank you." I have copies of my information if any of you council members would like one.
I'll take one.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is KHMH.
I'm happy to answer any questions, if you find any in there. Can you hear me? Okay. I'd like to read a prepared statement on behalf of the letter writer. "To the respected council members and citizens of the city of Cannon Falls, Minnesota, this has been edited to read in the time allotted. This Tuesday, September 20th, 2022, the city council will be voting to lay off four employees of Cannon Falls ambulance. I was on the agenda as a termination, but because the city, in violation of Minnesota statute 13.045 and 5B.01-13, which are intended to protect victims of serious violence, among other things, chose to disseminate my name and employment information, my agenda has been moved to 10422. However, they are still in violation of those laws, which are at minimum a criminal offense at the misdemeanor level, since they insist on leaving the information and meeting public. Regardless, the five of us respectfully seek community support. The official reason behind these actions is that we have not satisfied call hour requirements. None of us have signed documentation agreeing to put in a stated amount of call time, nor has there ever been an official policy, more of a spoken agreement. If there is one now, there certainly was not one when we were hired. Here's the real reason this is happening. We, as employees, have been involved in civil rights complaints against the city. To date, we haven't seen no real validation, resolution, or restitution. In 2014 and 2017, ambulance personnel were involved in a complaint against a member of leadership. These issues range from harassment based on federally protected statuses all the way to physical and sexual assault. Whether politically conservative or liberal, one thing we can all agree on is that there is absolutely no excuse for violence outside of the realm of self-defense. The city and even law enforcement has protected and covered up this individual's actions. The victims have been forced or scared into silence. As such, this individual, while subject to corrective action on at least two occasions, remains employed." "Commandation for our years of public service. Three, benefits paid to us and our families if we are gone for occupational-borne PTSD and related issues. The first two are very simple to accomplish and are absolutely within the city's power to do, easily, I might add. The third may be something the city may claim to have no power to do something about, or they may simply direct us to work comp or tell us to talk to a lawyer. This is a cop-up because it places everything back on the victim. It is victim-blaming behavior. The reality is, workers' compensation payment is very difficult to attain and is based on an employee's wage, history, and potential future earnings. Similarly, civil actions are based in the same, at their base at least. This is not a typical part-time job that one could take or leave. Even those of us who work only occasionally have seen the worst of the worst. One of these people being placed in a layoff status received an award for saving an elementary school teacher's life when she went into cardiac arrest. We have seen gruesome death even amongst babies, babies mangled in a car accident or in a meat grinder. I have hugged my sobbing coworkers in the supply room or the call rooms or the hospital garage, which are some of the few places we can break down privately because we are charged with putting on a brave face publicly. Whether we worked one hour or thousands in service for the city, we deserve recognition for our service, both in spirit, in support of services, and frankly, financially, even though you really can't put a price on trauma like that. In spite of the challenges, I encourage the city to work amicably with those who have been wrong to find a creative solution. This process doesn't have to be one of animosity. I call on the citizens of this city to recognize that there is a problem and support us, as we have cared for you every time you picked up the phone and called 911. Respectfully, anonymous, BS and RP."
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, Steve, you're going to be up next, so you don't have to come up now. You're actually on the agenda, so. Okay, Gorman.
Just for the record, I want to make sure everybody knows I was placed in front of Dablo. That's all I want to know. So I'm up on Bluff Drive, scheduled to do, we're building a house up there, and they're building a sidewalk right in front of this house, and it's kind of handcuffed us. I've talked to Dan about it, but I would like this council to do something about it, especially you, Derek. You could bring this up because you're the chairman of the Public Works, and maybe we could get something taken care of. They're putting a sidewalk the entire length of that block. There's a bluff on the north side of it, so there's no way to cross it. I got six trucks full of cement. They weigh about 80,000 pounds apiece. Not real smart to drive across a brand-new sidewalk. So my proposal is leave out 10, 12 feet, I'll pour the sidewalk. I'm quite capable of doing that. Rather than me wrecking it, tearing it out, and replacing it, it only makes sense. I don't know where you've got with it, Dan, but it'd be nice if the council would pass that. Second, there's a curb out there that's getting replaced. Rochester Sand and Gravel bit it about six weeks ago. You folks approved it. It was about $52 a foot to remove and replace that curb. Two weeks ago, you approved the replacement of curb on Limestone Road for $84 a foot. They're not removing and correcting the soils. Dan and his crew are doing that. That's quite a difference, since removing the curb and correcting the soils is about half of the price of the curb in this particular instance. When I did it a little over a year ago for Derek's aunt, I charged $35 a foot. So that means that this latest curb on Limestone Road was five times more than what I charged. And you, Matt, questioned my price about 14 months ago. So I'm wondering, how did that happen? And nobody questioned anything. And it seems odd that it's triple what Rochester Sand and Gravel just bit, and they're just in the process of replacing. Thank you for your time.
Okay, we'll close the public input portion of the meeting. We'll get into the consent agenda. Oh, I'm sorry. Forgot Steve. You're up, Steve. Sorry.
Of course, I get teased and forgotten in my world. I feel like Rodney Dangerfield. So I'm Steve Dablo from the Cannon Falls Area Historical Society, and a local resident. And I'm actually pretty excited tonight, more so than normal. We have another $10,000 check to give to you guys here in just a little bit. But it was a number of years ago where we acquired that White House for $186,000, and one major tornado, one heart attack, don't know where that came from, two years of COVID, and we're closing in on the end of this thing. And that's getting really exciting. This donation will get us to $160,000. That's our math, I'm sure. Yours will concur, Neil. And it was $186,000 that was paid for that house. And I really wanted to go after all of this money myself. We have about another $3,500 in commitments, and I'm hoping to have another check here within a month to get us to 170 of the 186. But I've never given the city an opportunity to join in on this. And I don't really know how to phrase it, but I'm going to make a suggestion. I waited to the end. I took a lot of heat from my board about not pressing the city for some money at the very beginning, but we wanted to do this. But the remaining $16,000, if you guys would like to forgive that, or contribute to that, or make me go out and raise it, I'll do that. But that's a proposal I'm making tonight, and I don't know if you can vote on it without checking with Neil. But this check here gets us to 160. I expect another one within four to six weeks that will get us to 170. And you got to come down and visit with Zach about how exciting. One thing we're doing right now is we're in the process of raising money for replacing all the windows in the fire hall. They're falling apart. But once we get, I wouldn't let the board spend any money on the White House until we got the city totally reimbursed, but we've got to put a ramp on there for ADA. But lots of exciting things are just around the corner, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Steve. Okay, let's get into the consent agenda. Consent agenda items may be adapted under one motion as presented, or may be removed for discussion and resolution as council business. For you at home and in the audience, I'll go through the consent agenda. Item A, just and correct claims for the accounting period ending September 14th, 2022. Item B, minute meetings for the August 16th, 2022 city council work session. Item C, minute meetings for the September 6th, 2022 city council meeting. Item D, approve the appointment of Wendy Rober to the police commission. Item E, second reading and adoption of ordinance 388, an ordinance of the city of Cannon Falls, Minnesota, amending the city code, Chapter 152, relating to development applications. Item F, approve a SEMCRA donation of land, Lookout Point. Item G, approve the hiring of part-time cable technician, Reese Sessions. Item H, approve a John Birch Park rental for the Cannon Falls High School Humanities fundraiser. Item J, approve the layoff of ambulance personnel, Chris Thompson. Item K, approve the layoff of ambulance personnel, Adam Piney. And item M, approve the layoff of ambulance personnel, Eric Porton. Is there anything the council would like to pull down?
Can I pull down H?
Okay, we'll go put that in our council business as item A. Anything else? If not, I take a motion to approve the consent agenda minus item H, the rental of the high humanities fundraiser.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Bringle, second by Duncan, to approve the consent agenda minus item H. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Okay, we'll get right into that, that item H. Derek approving the John Birch Park rental for the.
Yeah, I just brought it down. They're doing a little fundraiser down there, and then I see we're going to charge $100 to rent the park. I just thought maybe we could waive that $100 fee. You know, they're just trying to raise money to go to Europe, and I'm sure every little bit helps. So I just thought I'd bring it up and see if the rest of you guys agree with that or not.
I agree with you.
Thanks.
I do.
I agree with you, too, but then we are charging other groups of money.
But I know, like, the Bears had their thing down there last weekend. I don't think they paid anything. I know we've had churches do stuff down there, the library do stuff down there, and as far as I know, we've never charged any of them, so.
I don't know. I think if it's the school, I think that's a little different. That's just me.
I think it'd be different if it was, you know, a family reunion or something.
Contribution in the fundraising effort for.
Yeah.
Or that. For the fundraiser. That could be our contribution.
Yeah, it could be our contribution.
Well, so I want to make a motion then to that.
I'll make a motion that we approve it without the $100 fee.
Second. Motion by Lundell, and the second by Montgomery, forego the $100 fee for the fundraiser in the park. Any other discussion?
Well, part of that, I think, is to help pay for cleanup, right? I think, isn't that kind of the point behind charging?
You would think the kids would be cleaning it up.
Right, so can we say?
Yes.
I'm just saying, right?
We'll forego the fee, but make sure you clean it up.
Yeah.
So then we wouldn't have someone, we wouldn't have city staff cleaning up.
Exactly. Right.
Yeah, we ask that of every group that's down there doing that, so.
That's a good point.
Okay, any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
You're welcome.
Okay, reports. Chamber.
Chamber. Busy yap, sorry. Okay, activities going on at the chamber? On September 29th, we do have a blood donor drive, and that is from noon to 6:00 PM at St. Ansgar's Lutheran Church. The Sogan Valley Art Fair is October 1st and 2nd. On the 1st, it's open from 10:00 to 5:00, and on the 2nd, it's open from 10:00 to 4:00. So I wish I remembered what annual event this is for them, because it's.
50th?
Wow. Congratulations to them. Ferndale Market Customer Appreciation Day on October 1st, 11:00 to 2:00 PM. Cannon Valley Senior Center, they have the white sidewalls coming in for a concert on October 29th from 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM. The tickets are for sale at the senior center and also at the chamber. They are $35 apiece. And in October, matter of fact, October 14th, the chamber will be holding a planning meeting with our board and ambassadors. So if you have ideas of what you'd like the chamber to be doing in the future, next year, please let the chamber know. You can contact us at tourism@cannonfalls.org. And I hope I get a lot of ideas. Let's change some things up and see what else we can do. Thank you very much. Are there any other questions?
Well, thanks, Kyle.
Thanks, Kyle.
Cable committee met the other day.
We met on the 12th, and we all were introduced to Reese Sessions and who we voted on to hire today to help with the recording of, videoing of some stuff related to council meetings and also activities around town, football and so on and so forth. So welcome to Reese. He's kind of been hands-on with us previously years ago, so he knows a little bit about our systems, and hopefully he'll be a good addition. That's all we, that's all that was on our agenda that night.
Okay. Finance committee.
Yes, we met on the 12th of September. We had two items. One was on the council agenda tonight, the SEMCRA Lookout Point. The other one is we're going to be starting talk with the, with the townships about fire contracts, and that'll be moving forward in the near future. The one thing I would like to add for our next finance committee meeting is to talk about Steve's request for the building adjacent to the historical society. That's it.
For those of you that know where Lookout Point is, it's up Spring Garden Hill on the left. It's, they call it Lookout Point, but I don't know how many acres it is, but SEMCRA bought it from, I think, the Lawyer Johnson Brothers many years ago, and we're going to develop it, but it's undeveloped, so. They, SEMCRA wanted to get rid of it, so they gave it to the city, so.
For a dollar.
For a dollar, sorry. So it's ours now, but it might work for us if they ever develop the Schweig property up there, maybe on top. There's a little buffer there, you know, for houses to work out a little bit, so we took it, and it's in our, in our hands now, so. Okay, library board.
Is she on? No. The only thing that I think is probably of note, there was an inquiry as to why there's no flag in front of the library property. So that might be coming to the park board to talk about that. Someone asked, so just FYI. I don't think it's required, but a lot of government buildings have them, so if someone asks, then of course you have to maintain that, like, taking it up.
Yeah, I may as well bring it up. Yep. Okay, let's go around, let's start with Dan over there.
Just a couple things. The water tower project has been completed. It's filled, and those pressure tanks are now taken away from the south booster station. Blacktopping projects are progressing. The south approach to the Third Street Bridge is complete. We'll be working up on limestone this week. Pickleball court's coming up, the alley by the bakery. Those are some of the things you'll see in the next few weeks. So that's it.
Those roads look pretty nice around town. Big improvement. Tim.
Last meeting that we had at the ambulance, it was a joint thing between the fire department, the hospital. We were fortunate that Safe Link, the bus company that serves the school district, donated a bus to the fire department a while back, and Dan's been hosting it, or housing it, I mean, down at the public workstation, and they've been doing a bunch of training, but fire allowed us to have an opportunity. So we did MCI training, which is mass casualty. We actually took patients up to the hospital and ran through some stuff, so that was really good. We haven't done one of those to that scale for a while, and a lot of us had great takeaways. Mayo, it's been kind of fun. They have now developed a system so our EMS providers can scan a QR code, takes them out to the interweb, and then they can actually get follow-up within two to four days on patients, which has been a big hurdle for us in the past, but now they've streamlined it, and so hopefully our EMS personnel can get just the feedback, what was going on with the patient, and help us improve our care to our community. And lastly, we've been working on getting a packet together so our oldest ambulance, we can have it hopefully maybe remounted, and that'll come to the finance committee and go through a process, but it sounds like chassis are over two years out, so we're trying to start getting ahead of it, because it's a big problem.
Okay, thank you. Laura.
I have a few updates from the EDA. I haven't been here for the last couple meetings, so I have a few things. We do have a few lots up in the industrial park that we should have some projects coming up in the next 12 months, hopefully. Carsonson Trucking, that already has, is an existing business in the industrial park, is expanding. They have a Carsonson leasing business that they'll be acquiring two of the lots, kind of right on the curve there when you enter into, they would be right across from Cannon Bells, actually. They have an option on those two lots there to expand their Carsonson leasing business. They'll have a building on one, and then the trucks that they'll be leasing will be on a paved lot on the other. And then Rob Bistro is looking to expand their existing business. They're in 11,000 square foot, the former Lawrence Meats Building, and they're looking to expand to about a 35,000 square foot space. So that will hopefully be happening in the industrial park, so I'm working with Pat Green on that. And then we are acquiring forfeiture, house forfeiture on 300 East Minnesota Street from the county. And with that, we'll get that taken care of as far as getting the building taken down, demoed, and then we'll get it ready for redevelopment for a future project, future housing project, so. And then the Keller Bartman apartment project, that is, or they're waiting on concrete, from what we understand. They're, it's graded and waiting for footings to be poured, so that's where we're at.
Okay. The property you're talking about, that's on Minnesota Street, 300 and?
Yep, it's on three, corner of 300 and Cedar, or Minnesota and Cedar.
Okay. Okay, Joe? I've been hearing a lot, a lot about vandalism. What's going on? You know, we had the gazebo burn and graffiti all around.
The gazebo got spray painted again. Fortunately, Public Works had some paint left over from the last time, so that was easily correctable, but definitely someone is going around tagging, so if anybody sees anything or knows anything about that, we'd like to know.
Okay. Neil.
Just an update. I know you guys have been wondering where the fairgrounds property and the park have, were about there. We should have had it on this agenda, but we had one more hiccup. There's a little sliver of land that is up on the northeast corner of the fairgrounds. It was part of a right-of-way when Ninth Street came through, and it was vacated to the city. Long story short, we're still trying to get the legal on that, and we should have it to you guys by the next meeting. There will be a, there will be a vacation of streets up at the fairgrounds. There will be easements for the water mains. There will be a swap of land, a couple of them. The park will be back to the city. The sliver of land will be part of the fairgrounds, and then it should be all cleaned up, we hope, so.
It's good to get it cleaned up. It's, there's a lot of, lot of fingers there going everywhere, so. Good for the fair board and the city. Okay, Derek, anything? Ray, Jill.
As someone who has been a customer of the ambulance here in the past, what, four or five months, I just want to commend your crew. They do a great job, and they did impress the Mayo Clinic doctor by knowing my name. I think, I think he was really impressed. I don't know why, but anyway, just you guys do a great job, and I'm really appreciative. That's all.
Steve.
Well, I hate to make Tim's head any larger, but I had to use them, too, and I think they were very timely, obviously. But one other thing I want to say is, Babe, are you still here? Is there some way we can work with Babe on that thing up there? I mean, is it, is it going to be a big deal?
Move, get her some trucks for it, that's all. Rick Knowles left, Lull is in the back, and he cannot get it out with waiting, he has to wait till the ground freezes and drive it through his daughter's lawn.
I mean, are you, the way it sounds, it's going to be a hardship for you to get your stuff done if they put that.
You can't do it yet.
Sidewalk in.
Well, we're going to do it one way or the other, and we'll try to bridge across it, but it's just not going to work well. It's too, it's too new, and I mean, even then, it's, you've got to plank across it, and those trucks, you know how they, they're three times as heavy as the one at Hancock, okay? The big guy.
Oh, is there?
Well, no, yes, and I'm just saying, leave it out. I'll put it in at no charge. It's a lot cheaper for me. I'm going to be there pouring cement anyway, so it's not a big deal to me.
Dan, is there some way we can work, work that in?
Thank you.
Yeah, I talked to Babe yesterday, and we can leave about 15 feet out there.
Okay.
We're trying to keep Rick Knowles in the loop on that, too, so.
Sure, okay.
Okay, sounds good.
Laura? Yeah? Bill?
Nope.
I don't have anything either, so. Just one meeting before our next council meeting, one committee meeting, the joint power board meets on September 27th. That's the only meeting between now and the next council meeting, so make note of that. And with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn. So moved. Motion by Lundell, second by Bringle. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.